Emily was Sunday, right? Emily was Sunday, wasn't it? Your birthday was Sunday, right? Yeah, she's all there all quiet.
All right, everyone. It is Thursday, January 30th, and I am going to call this meeting to order. As we get started, I just want to take a moment. There's been a lot that's happened just in the last 24 hours, in the last several weeks. And so if we can just take a moment to collect ourselves and be present in the work that we are tasked with. All right, Madam Clerk, if you can call the role.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Burns.
Present.
Ms. Cooper.
Present.
Ms. Dooley.
Here.
Mr. Morris. Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Ms. Richardson.
Here.
And Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, may I have a motion to approve our proposed agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve our proposed agenda.
A second.
All right, we have a first and a second. To approve our proposed agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we have a proposed agenda, and I will turn it over to you, Dr. Gurley.
All right, we will begin with Ms. Powell, who will talk with you all about our furniture request for fifth grade.
This is a request for authorization for potential use of fund balance in order to get ahead of some manufacturer's price increases that are already known to the vendors for the furniture that we sort of standardize on over school modernizations. The situation we have is that we've got middle school shops where it's all beautiful and we have our elementary schools currently grades in the K through, which have all been modernized except for trailers, which is in progress as we speak. Two things, if you'll hit their new furniture package this summer, when at the same time the furniture is coming in for the student set of K grade. We've talked about this facility's facilities development and kind of how to kind of figure out whether this wasn't fully available to solve the great furniture. We don't want to have a situation where the fifth graders and preschoolers choose places and the creators who are here to go back to their, that grade building was back into the neighborhood of elementary schools. We don't want that one grade level to have mismatched, outdated furniture. The preschoolers, they have some things that they got from the modernization, but the preschoolers intentionally didn't have as much of a touch, especially with furniture. We're still working for that preschool center. So the preschooler could come over here with their stuff through the furniture, and we will also.
I'm sorry, I thought it was on. I'm so sorry, I thought the thing was lit up. Oh, yeah, no, you don't want that. Okay, I guess there's a brighter shade of green. Anyway, the preschool in the one and a quarter million, when they come over, there'll be some changes to this building, and there'll be, there's allowance in there for some furniture touches. But we really, we feel strongly that we will want to equip those fifth grade classrooms with furniture that's comparable to every other classroom in the elementaries. By authorizing use of fund balance for this purpose, the manufacturer is, the major manufacturers agreed to, which is 80% of it, they will, we can secure our, we can put our order in, secure the current prices, which actually saves us enough money, roughly in our estimates, for the other 28,000 or so. We'll need to get some kidney tables and a few specialty items that aren't offered from this one manufacturer. So we just ask that the board approve this as an authorized use of fund balance, so we can get our order in and secure the current prices ahead of price increases. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Powell. Any questions from the board? Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Powell. This all makes sense. I appreciate you all getting ahead of this. Normally, this would be a CIP-related type of item versus like an operational budget item?
It could certainly be a CIP, yes. It could be a CIP item. It's a large enough purchase where it would qualify as a capital purchase.
Okay, and did we ask the city for?
We did.
We did?
We did.
And they denied the request?
So this has, this has been an ongoing conversation. It's not a new conversation. This has been for years. I would, you know, talk about whether we could get it in small cap or whether we could get it if there was a favorable variance, you know, enough cushion in the project for the middle school. And they didn't say, like, the answer on getting it into the favorable variance on the middle school was never like, well, we'll have, it was always, we'll have to wait and see, we have to wait and see. But the reality is, we've hit enough rock, there's been enough that happened. There's not money left. That was the original hope, is that there would be money left in the middle school project that would be sufficient to cover this fifth grade furniture, and that's, that is not the case. And we know that now. So then, when you talk about the larger CIP budget, what I would say about that is, you know, the list of things is long, right? That we're asking for out of CIP that we want to see. Energy efficiency, accelerated restroom modernizations, lots of touches for CHS. There's a lot we're looking for. I would say that if you take action tonight to approve this as a use of fund balance, it doesn't close the door to continue asking for the city's support on this. But we need to get the order in. Does that make sense? So you could authorize this. When you authorize something as a use of fund balance, you're just saying that if it's needed, you can use fund balance for this purpose. But if it's not needed, if we would be successful in continuing conversations with the city about CIP or whatever, then that's no harm, right? But if we miss putting in this purchase order during the month of February, you know, I like a sale. I want to get things at the current prices.
No, I appreciate that context. And I bring it up because the city has a $22 million surplus that they're putting into the CIP contingency there, which is used as their slush fund. And I'm glad that we would have the flexibility potentially to maybe tap that here. So I'm a little bit surprised, unfortunately, that they, or I'm not surprised that they told you no.
So.
A little bit myth that they wouldn't necessarily.
What I also want, I do also want to say that we do have some opportunities, based on my meeting with Sam on Monday, we have some opportunities to tap into that money to address our safety projects. So.
I think this could be brought to the table in the continuing conversations around surplus and CIP. But, Ms. Hoover, we can't really put a purchase order in the system without knowing that we've got it covered. And so fund balance is a way we could cover it. We need your permission. But that's not to say, it's always, it's authorizing the use of, but there's always an if needed on the back end of that, because sometimes it's not necessary. And, you know, maybe the CIP conversations will take a different direction. And it hasn't, to be clear also, I know there's a process behind CIP. In my recent conversations with the city, I haven't even bothered to re-ask, because again, that's part of a bigger process. And I don't want anyone to think it's been a recent, no. I know the door is closed on the middle school project line.
Sorry, colleagues, I just, or sorry. I just bring this up because 300,000 could be our surplus for this year. And I know we've been working really hard on building that up, as Ms. Hoover often reminds me, because I'm looking at ways to potentially spend it. And she reminds me that we want six months of operating cash flow. And so to use our fund balance for something, I feel like, sorry, that the city should be paying for, is a little frustrating. However, I do recognize the need to make the decision, and we can argue with the city afterwards about if we can, they pay for it or not. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I concur with Mr. Meyer, fully. I mean, so you need action on this tonight?
No, next week. Well, this is.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. All right.
I need action this month. Next, I do need, we do need action in early February to comfortably get that, it's a large purchase order. We'd like to get it in to secure the prices.
No, I mean, I fully support doing that. But again, to Mr. Meyer's point, I mean, we're always so thin on our fund balance as it is. I mean, for the most part, so I just would, this seems like a no-brainer that they should be supporting us with this. So everybody, stick a pin in this, so that I'm sure we won't forget to bring it up again. So, thank you.
Any other questions on this? No, I appreciate, Mr. Meyer, you bringing that up. I think, I appreciate that the conversation on Monday included some discussion of surplus funds coming back to us to, quite frankly, take care of items that the city was responsible for doing that they didn't. And so there is some frustration there, that we should be grateful for this gift that was part of a contract for them to have completed all along. So, Ms. Powell, I hear you. We will take action on this next week and continue the conversation with our city partners. All right, you're still up.
All right, we will have a budget conversation. Welcome to our fiscal year '25-'26 budget development. We can go into the next slide. Here's our outlined agenda for this evening. And I know that you all will, but I just want to make sure I say that as we go through this, if you have any questions, go ahead and shoot those questions while we are going through the presentation. Next slide. I just want to start by just recognizing our finance team. You know, this meritorious budget award really is a testament to the work that they do daily to set us up for success. I want to thank Ms. Hoover for her leadership. I often feel like I report to her sometimes, because she, she keeps me in line and makes sure that we are always in good standing and being good stewards of the, of the city's money. Next slide. This was in our previous presentation, but I just want to make sure that people know where we started this work. We started this work with our strategic plan, which is in the gray boxes at the top. And then through the work, through the collaborative work, through the school board and through our PTOs and other stakeholder feedback, we identified our budget priorities, which are listed down at the bottom. We're going to start with revenue. And by focusing on revenue, which comprises of the funds that support our staffing and meets the needs of our school division. So let's look at our revenue. This slide highlights our various funding sources. The pie chart is based on our current year's budget and offers a consistent representation of our division's funds over the past years. The city remains there, that 62.4%, the city remains our biggest portion of our funding sources, of our funding sources. And then if we look at our other revenue, it consists of state, federal, and local, which are smaller pieces of the pie. This slide displays our seven-year trend of total budget revenues. And so during this period, the state revenue has averaged about 22% of our overall revenue. And so for fiscal '24, that was the highest budgeted revenues of our seven-year timeframe. And so as you look at from fiscal year '24 to '25, you do see that there is a dip of approximately 3% in state revenue. And I think that it's important for us to remember that this is when they recalculated the LCI, the Local Composite Index, which reflects our locality's ability to pay. And so our LCI increased from, increased to 77.02%, resulting in the state contributing less, which is 22.9% towards our SOQ. So that means when that happens, we're picking up, we're picking up more of the tab. Until the state rebenchmarks and next year in 2026, this will remain our funding formula. And so, a lot of work to do in this area. Next slide. So this is the second year of our biennium budget, and the SOQ revenues are determined on the formula based on our LCI rate, which means that less funding, which means less state funding and a greater reliance on the city, which we will continue to talk about throughout this presentation. And as noted on the previous slide, we saw the increase in the LCI, the dip in the state contributions. So on our state revenue estimates, the governor did present his proposed budget back in December. And that budget had some technical updates and some minor adjustments to ADM formula, the lottery programs, state taxes. And there was a little bit of work in the area of English language learner. So not a lot of changes, because we are in the second year of the biennium. Next slide. The, so as a result of the state revenue, the, our estimate is an additional $538,553 in state revenue. The increases are concentrated in the following three areas. The compensation supplement, the, that represents the state share of the 3% of SOQ. And I think we always want to remind people that we are staffed well above the SOQ, the SOQ formula. There was some additional monies for at-risk. That's the lot, through the lottery. And this allocation is, was based on the lottery's revenue. And then lastly, there was more dollars for the English as a Second Language program. And so we saw the numbers that were presented by Dr. Fouts back in November. And you'll see in the presentation, we've done some work in that area to align with the new, the new changes to ESL staffing.
Yes, sir. Dr. Gurley, I've been following a lot of the bills, but I don't, I haven't seen many that are suggesting major movements in any of the state funding, I don't think.
No.
And we're not fixing really any of the SOQ?
No.
Right, okay. Just wanted, so we're not, last year, I know there was a lot of questions and things were moving around a lot. This year, we're pretty sure about where we're going to land, right?
Yes, and, and I think that goes back to what I said a few months ago about, you know, the, I feel like every year it gets wiser and wiser in the budget process. And, and really, it's because we're in that second year of the, of the biennium, and there are only those technical adjustments. Next slide. So this slide just represents our trends, our trends in the city's appropriation annually over the last seven years. And so, again, the city has been our, is the biggest part of where we get our, our monies from. And so that's why this slide is so important as we talk about how much funds they do allocate for us. And we'll go into it in greater detail on the next slide. So this slide represents our funding formula of 40% of our formula for the real estate and personal property. And so that's listed in that, that blue area. And so along with the actual is represented by that red bar. So it's the funding formula, and then what did the city actually give us? And so you will see that during the pandemic years, there was some dips there. But if you notice that in the '24 year, they funded us right above. And then if you look at last school year, they funded us significantly above our, what we requested. When we look at the FY '26, the funding formula for the city is $3.4 million. And so however, I think it's the work we've had with our city, the advocacy on your part, advocacy on, from our CEA through the, through their union process, our collaborative processes with, my regular meetings with Sam, our city manager. They did come in above our funding formula for this school year. So they, so the funding formula was $3.4 million. They gave us an additional 1.4, almost 1.5, $1.4 million, which brings our city increase to $4,4927. No, I said that, $27,497,888. That's the, that's the appropriation that we will receive for this school year. Yes, Mr. Meyer?
So this is the draft amount, their proposal to us at this moment?
No.
This is what they've told us is?
So initially.
Is the, our number that, there's no movement on that going forward?
So initially, the, initially, the formula number was $3.4 million. So we, so we had our ask. So when we met back in December, we showed, this is, this is where we are. I think that was 7, 7.9. So that was $7.9 million. And that was includes, inclusive of city contracts, you know, our ask in terms of instructional personnel. And so we knew that the 3.4 was not going to be where we needed to land. We did some work internally, just to make sure, based on the budget requests from schools, what, what students need to be successful. We knew that the 3.4, the 3.4, which is the formula, was not going to be what worked. And we had this number that we said, you absolutely must provide this to us in order for this to work, and not only work, work well. And that was that additional 1.4, almost $1.5 million.
Yeah, I mean, colleagues, I just bring this up, because I remember last year, when we were in January, having this conversation with our city colleagues, and we were saying the formula, which is a rule of thumb, it's not an ordinance. And as, I don't like this formula, because it's only based on basically real property taxes in town, which the city has been adjusting the other taxes they have in town, personal property taxes, funding and fees, lodging taxes, food taxes, they've adjusting all that up. So what we're doing is, we're getting a smaller and smaller piece of the pie, basically, as a total tax base for the city, because they're adjusting, they're not only using the real property taxes, they're adjusting other things, other taxes to increase their revenues. That's why you're seeing all that. And in addition to, they, I would say, underestimate every year the proposed amount of real property taxes we're going to get. And that's why you see a $4 million surplus. And that means 40% of that 1.4 is $1.6 million that we should have got, you know, last year. Now, they bumped us up. I don't, I don't think we should be showing this graph in the future, because I think we need a new funding formula that is not based on the 40%, our increase every year, based on the 40% rule of real property taxes. So, I don't like being constricted to this, because I don't think it's actually legitimate. And I don't think we should be basing our decisions on what they're giving us, being, and what they're owed us, being this funding formula, which is, again, not an ordinance and just kind of a rule of thumb. So, I'm sorry, I'm staying on a soapbox here, but just trying to, for my colleagues, I think it's great that they're considering $5 million from us, but this is an initial proposal by them. And I think that number should go up, and it can go up if we, based on our needs-based budget that you presented to them earlier.
So I just needed a little clarification. I mean, I know that we, that meeting that we had with council was considered an early and a newer meeting, correct? But I feel like we've jumped to this point without really sitting and doing the work with you. I mean, I feel like you took what Mr. Sanders and everybody shared with you as far as the amount of money, and you and your team adjusted. But I feel like we lost, I feel like the meeting where we all kind of sit and look at your big want, right? Last, last year, we had, what, nine million was where we started? Or was it higher than that? 12, and then to nine, and then, and then they gave a seven. I mean, I just feel like we've lost a meeting somewhere. I mean, I just feel like we've lost a meeting somewhere actually to.
I feel like that still hap, I, I hear you all, I think I disagree respectfully with love always. I, I disagree that we just didn't settle for the number because. If they said we were only going to give you three, three point nine million dollars, I would be still sitting here today saying, we need five million dollars.
No, I agree and I, I respectfully with love, I'm going to push back to you, sir, a little bit. And I, and I know you guys have done the work to look at this, but I feel like, um. I mean, so I'm, I'm looking at our schedule of, of budget development calendar. So what, what's the meeting that's going to happen on February tenth? I mean, you, you, you've already presented your proposed, um. Budget to us the week before and then we meet with them again. Why are we even meeting with them then?
We don't, we don't have to.
And I'm not saying we don't have to, I'm saying that first meeting was kind of a preliminary, like here's what's going on. And I really kind of anticipated that we would be then meeting again, saying, okay, here's where we are. And I think a lot of things have happened in the country in the last couple of weeks, few weeks. That I have a lot of questions and I'm sure all my colleagues do and everybody does as far as federal funding and, and, you know, how that's going to trickle down to state and then to us. You know, and, and to, to the city. So I just feel like there is more work that needs to be done and a lot more discussion. And I'm sure no one has answers, you know, I mean, we don't seem to really know what's going on and how that might impact, you know, the different titled monies. Um, but I want to make sure our students are okay and how do we do that? I mean, this is un, unknown.
Well, I think this slide aside, if we can move past this slide and give staff an opportunity to actually present what they have worked on to us. And then have greater conversation about whether we as a board feel like that is sufficient to accomplish the goals that we've set out. Um, or not, but I think we need to give Dr. Gurleyman's team a chance to actually share with us the work that they've done in putting together this budget.
I completely agree with you. My point here being is we've put ourselves in a negotiating disadvantage by using this formula and then showing them being generous with us by giving us another one point four billion, which is sorry.
And this slide doesn't necessarily have to be the one that gets put into what we present to city council. My point is let's give them a chance to, to share their work. Proceed.
We know, waiting on Leslie. All right, so, um, next we will talk about our, um, let's look at our expenditures. So let's shift. So, um, our enrollment is remaining, um, we, I think we're, we're doing well in terms of. We're bouncing back, um, from the pandemic. Um, I think we're stabilizing and so I think you see that we've, since twenty two, we, we've been about the, about the same place. Specifically last year, it's only the increase of about two students. All right, so, um, our expenditures, so, um, when you look at our expenditures, about seventy four percent of our, um. What we spend our money on falls in the category of salary and salary and wages and benefits. And, and so the next portion, um, that, as you can see there, is the contract services. And that's where we could continue to try to work through like and massage the, the contracts and, and, and gain a better understanding of. Just what is it that we're spending our monies on, um, with the city? And so I think that that's one area that we're going to continue to work on.
And when you say contracts, that's transportation, that's maintenance, that's, thank you.
Yeah.
Those are all city contracts.
All city contracts.
City contracts, no independent contractors or outsourcing of labor works, et cetera.
The city might be outsourcing.
Sure, the city could be, but we're.
Is a predominant, uh, contractor.
Okay.
We spent about ten to eleven million dollars with them. And then we have other small contracts.
Mm-hmm.
But the majority of it is city.
All right, um, so our staff allocations, um, it's significant a part of our budget as we just talked about is salary and benefits. And so we know that seventy percent of our staff are dedicated to the instructional roles, including teachers, librarians and instructional assistants. Uh, nineteen percent of those, uh, are, those school-based services such as, um, our custodians and nutrition workers. And then the last eleven percent are division-wide operations and administration. So that can be human resources, technology and, and finance.
I know we're very lean and we do, and is there benchmarks that you know that are for each one of these categories that we compare ourselves to?
Oh, in terms of like what are our allocations? I don't, I don't think, I mean, but I think, well, not.
Yeah, for education. So, I mean, is it eleven, ten percent your normal admin?
So, this is, would be going in the wayback machine, but the last, um, there was a time and it was around the time I came here or just before that. So it's been about a decade ago. They had these efficiency studies and the state would offer that you could, that they would come in and do efficiency studies. And, um, we still have that report, um, but it was, it, what it showed at that time is that administration was the air, like, oh, administration was where we were light. Uh, in comparison to other school divisions, um, I could gladly share that report, but there's been, um, nothing, we had, there hasn't been a look at that since. But there was an independent, um, efficiency review. Charlottesville City took advantage of that and had people come in and, and assess all of that. And so that, that's the last time that it was done. As far as current benchmarking work. Um, off the top of my head, I'm just not sure what the comparables would be for that.
I just remember that study you mentioned and I think it's a feather in our cap if we could.
The efficiency study.
That and show that, that we're efficient with our, our spending, our spending, you know, they get more than the average on schools and less on administration, et cetera.
As far as that, or as far as that specific breakdown, yes, it showed we were very efficient for administration.
All right, um, so one of the, uh, one of the top priorities for this budget development did fall within the, um, realm of compensation and wages. Um, and in terms of attracting and retaining staff. And so we do have our first ever, um, collective bargaining agreement for licensed staff. And so what you see here, um, first, you see we, um, worked on the steps. Um, the steps on the, on the current, I was going to say previous, but the steps on the current teacher scale are not even. Um, some of them are one and a quarter, some of them are one, some of them, so they bear, one, yeah, they vary. Through the collective bargaining process, um, the first thing that happened there on that first line is that all of them are now equal at one point five. And so there's, um, so you see that is a cost of, of two point two million dollars to fix that. And so, um, in terms of, as we've been having conversations about what this costs, um, this is, am I saying? This is a one-time cost because we're fixing it this one year and you won't see the, you won't see this line again in our next year's budget because the steps have been fixed. Um, what, what you will continue to see is the next part. Where, um, included in the agreement is also a raise of four million dollars. Uh, I'm sorry, four percent, four percent. Um, that raise cost us, um, um, close to two point six million dollars, two point five. Um, and then the, for the general and administrative staff, um, there's the three percent increase, which is reflective of the, um. Of the governor's, um, the governor's budget and that cost, um, six hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. And then you see what our, um, insurance, uh, you see what our insurance costs. Um, in December, we did bring to you all that we thought the premiums would be increasing by nine percent. Um, for a total of about one point one million dollars and this was dri, this was driven by some client, um, our claims experience. Um, of about a hundred and seven percent. Um, and so we have now, um, this has been revised based on our last, um, six months. And so we did, um, we got that number back and that was yes, that was yesterday. We got the number back yesterday and so our cost is an increase of six percent. And so that number changed to five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Um, so that was a, a save in that area. Uh, we do have a savings of two point five million dollars, um, through staff turnover and the, uh, through the VRS hybrid program. And so that money had been, um, earmarked there, so you see that in parentheses in that chart. Uh, and so when we look at what the salaries and benefits cost us, um, for our licensed staff. And our, um, licensed staff, the support staff and the healthcare, the total cost there is that three point five million dollars.
So that second line is actually just a four percent raise?
Yes.
It's a four percent plus the one point five percent step.
But the one point, the, in the column on the right, the two point five nine five is just a four percent raise.
No, and they're moving up those same, these years, this year's teachers are going to be on the next step, which is one and a half percent higher.
Mm-hmm.
For a total of five and a half.
And then just fixing the, this pay scale is two point two million, which is another, in the exact, one point five percent, okay, all right.
Because presumably we're making a, a difference for some teachers who are going to be on a step if we didn't fix it would be one percent or one and a quarter.
I'm just sorry, I got confused.
Is that correct?
Double counting that one and a half percent.
No.
We got an email from Cube, uh, I think last week or this year about budget priorities and, and number one priority being taking care of staff. Do you believe this addresses that concern they?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, again, uh, you know, we, you all, along with, um, our teacher union worked really hard, um, through the collective bargaining process. Uh, I mean, I know that they would say that this is reflective of the, the work that they've done through the process. And so, yes, I do believe that, uh, you know, this is reflective of the, the work that's been done. And we know that, um, our, uh, support staff is going to be engaged in collective bargaining. And, you know, this is, uh, this can also be another area of opportunity, uh, through the collective bargaining for, um, that group as well.
Thanks. Uh, one last thing that, the savings for the retirement system, is this one-off or is this going to be annual going forward?
One-off, this is a one-time.
And so we will have to find two and a half million dollars next year to get, basically meet this year's salary increases.
The first line item is a one-time, so there is some netting out potentially, right?
Okay. So just for my colleagues to understand that we have to find another two and a half million dollars next year, basically, uh, right off the bat, if I understand these correctly?
No.
No?
Are, are you referring to the second row, the, the annual five point five? Because that will be our cost next year, if not a little bit more, because that's the agreement for the next three years.
Two point two is a one-off.
That's a one, that's.
Okay, so that kind of balances it out, all right.
Yes.
Tony, it's my understanding, Ms. Dooley and Mr. Dr. Gurley, we, we haven't received, or that collective bargaining contract hasn't been finalized yet, correct?
Is there voting on it?
Yeah, they ran the ratification process.
And so it really, it technically hasn't come to us for approval yet.
Well, that, that number will not change on their end. So it's going to be presented to the teacher union that, um, so the ratification process is these are the things that you said you wanted to, uh, bargain upon. The, the contents of that document does not change. So like, they, they won't come back, you won't get a document that says that the salary increase for, um, licensed staff is seven million. Because those numbers, their numbers don't change. Is that what the question?
Well, but we haven't, I mean.
We haven't voted.
We haven't voted on it yet. So, I mean, it's just, it's, it's being reflected here, but it, we haven't voted on it yet. So I just, I guess I wanted that in the record. And then also, um, I was trying to look back and help me, Ms. Powell or whoever, or, or Ms. Hoover. On average, the last, let's say, five, six years, I mean, I know that the board has always prioritized and done everything we could to maximize. Um, teacher salary, whatever percent we could get them. Um, has it averaged, what, three to five percent? Is that?
It's about four percent.
Is that about right?
About four percent.
Is what the average was. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, and I think maybe my colleague over here, or her birthday, and it landed, might be able to, six percent is seems a little bit higher than, uh, inflation. Healthcare inflation though is usually higher than regular inflation. I've been wondering, are we above average there for everybody these days or are we?
That number is a lot lower than the, uh, health medical market trend. The, the market, medical market trend is about nine, nine, it's close to ten percent.
Okay, so our programs that we have in place are doing a job on at least slowing our costs there. These would be kind of, again, the benchmark out in the market. Okay, thank you.
All right, um, so then our non-discretionary, um, our non-discretionary, so this, these are some of our contracts. So, uh, when we had our joint meeting, we did provide you a high-level overview of our city's contracts. And, um, and we did not have all of the numbers at that time. So we initially presented to you the three-year average, um, and so last, uh, was, it was last week, we did receive the numbers. And there was an increase of about seventy three thousand dollars over the last three years. So the city maintenance contract, um, did increase four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty four thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, and then the pupil, um, the pupil contract, the last time, we did have a much larger number for you. Uh, and there was a couple of different reasons there. Um, but the, and we had projected a cost increase of about seven hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. Um, but then once we got the actual numbers from them, there was no increase. Uh, because we had absorbed the, uh, we're absorbing the cost of the position we brought over. And so it just really worked, uh, to our favor, Ms. Who.
I can, I can explain, it's okay. So the, um, at the bottom, there's a note that says this number is, it fundamentally, it ended up being net zero. Because when the expenses we took over for, with the transition of the, um, planning and routing position. That offset the non-discretionary increases on their side. One being, uh, increase in like uniform costs for their driver core and stuff. But then there are a couple of other pieces that I want to elaborate on. One thing that was in that request is this piece where they have a lot of, a fair number of drive, of the driver core is in what they call the, um. Thirty-hour positions instead of the forty-hour positions. And there are a fair number of these, apparently there are still a fair number of these thirty-hour positions that are having to drive consistently over thirty hours. But they don't get full-time benefits contribution. They get overtime, but they're not classified as full-time employees. Um, that is a longstanding discussion about the number of thirty-hour FTEs versus forty-hour FTEs that are in this, the way that pupil is organized. But that's a matter that I believe they will have to work out through their collective bargaining process in the future. That is not something that's coming up, that's not being advanced at this time and that's something for them to sort out internally. Um, so that's not coming forward right now. So that was one piece that's being set aside. The other piece is not being set aside, I'm hopeful that this is going to be resolved, um, without a budget increase to us. Um, Ms. Hoover and I talked with Chrissy Hamel and explained this issue where we really want to get off the drug, so to speak. Or transition away from using the dependency on contracted services, the level of dependency that we have on third-party contractors to trans, do a lot of our special needs transports, right? And for the dependency that we had before the pandemic, it even ramped up during, you know, since the, during and since the pandemic. We want to get that down. The only way to do that is to have like a more vans and more van drivers. The, it's not a, a true net increase all the time. They, what we really want to do is move money from the purchase services line over into the, um, van drivers line, whatever they, they call their classification for people who drive vans. It's not a full CDL or CDLS. The city had, you know, they like, like us, try to tightly control your FTEs. And the frustration that transportation has had is that they can't post for the van drivers without the budget funding. But the funding really has to stay on the purchase services line until we've got the other solution in place to because you've got to have those contractors. These are not discretionary transports. So we spoke with Chrissy Hamel about trying to work with their HR department and their finance department to help figure out a way to get out of our own way to allow the postings to be done with the understanding that money will transfer fluidly from the purchase service line into the payroll lines to support the drivers coming on board to drive vans. And their Sherry Eubanks in the Transportation Department was able to make a move even this year to continue increasing the number of vans. And we're trying, we've supported them as well with van purchases. So that's, so part of the re, part of it that went, that's out of this request that was in the bigger number before is something that I think just has to wait and go through their processes with how they're organized with their drivers and their labor. But this other piece with getting away from contracted services and moving to the van drivers, I think there's a way to do that without that temporary, almost artificial increase in the budget. But procedurally, it has to be worked out. And so I was asked today, I'm going to write a letter to Garland, a note just to clarify what we would like to see happen in facilitating that transition. And we'll see what happens from there.
So you need fifty thousand dollars or something like that, just to like, again, it will end up at our bottom or a wash at the end of the year?
I think I'd like to see us do as much as possible in that transition, working within, it's a big line for purchase services. These special transports are not inexpensive. I think it's six hundred and some thousand dollars. So I want to see how far we can get just with working out the logistics of them being able to hire van drivers, use the available vans and anything that we can purchase, you know, support from our vehicle line. Because we've done that before and we were able to get ahead on our vehicles with some of the SO money. So when we were in that time, so I think it can be worked out. So I don't, I'm, I'm okay with saying we can make progress on this, good progress. Just working out these details and I'm hope, that's what, that's what I want to focus on.
So how much do you think in savings we could, we can net out?
I don't think there's going to be any savings to claim right now, because we have, there's, there's still the van purchases and all that. But I think for the
Like fifty K a year or something?
Oh, that's I, I'm not, I better not speak on that part, but I, I just, I'm not sure. I don't want to hang a number on that, but hopefully, let's see. We need to be looking at the budget versus actual reports to see what happens in time.
I guess this is the thing that I, I mean, going back to your point, Lee, so like, what are we going to be meeting about with them in a month? But I think I would like to see presented if you cannot resolve it between now and then.
Yeah. Well, and I think, I think asking for, you know, continuing the conversation, because it came up the last time we were in here for the joint meeting about what type of reporting you're interested in seeing on these contracts and being really, yeah, that's, that's, that's all fine to talk about, good stuff to talk about.
Thank you. I think in in that same vein and previous conversation, looking at the city maintenance contract, Dr. Gurley, I appreciate you sending that out for us to review. I myself had not seen it in some time, but was drawn to a section specifically in regards to records and asking the city to maintain complete and accurate records in a form mutually agreeable to the parties to substantiate its charges for services rendered upon request. The school board shall have right to inspect those reports. And so I'm just wondering if if that's an opportunity for us to see where I understand, we just get a line item of of what we are to pay every year for services, but we don't really know how that happens or if it happens. And maybe there's some question that it isn't happening. And so if there's savings on the city side that comes as a result of that work not being done, that money doesn't come back to the school system. It goes back into the surplus at the city of which we do not see often. And so appreciate, I know, Dr. Gurley, you're working with Sam to kind of look at those agreements and see where we need to massage them a little bit and and be a little cleaner in our detail of what the expectations are. And I appreciate that. There was acknowledgement at city council CIP meeting that some of us attended. So appreciate the work that's being done there. But I think just as we continue to move this process forward, that is something my colleagues and I would like to see that that there is some line item accountability to see what that looks like.
And Ms. Powell and I've already started that work. So I started that in my conversation. She's done the same thing, working with Chrissy. And so we've, we've already said, we, we need some type of reporting system that's understandable by both groups. So then we know what the services are that are being rendered, you know, like what are we getting for the money?
And I don't, I don't know how much of a heavy lift it is on the city side or on our side, but I, you know, and speaking with my colleagues, I, I would like to see a couple of years of that, if that's, if that's reasonable. Again, don't want to over task anyone, but let's try to see what a trend is and what's meaningful to get this work done in a way that cares for for our grounds and what the contract was intended for, I think. Thank you.
We've already started.
One more question about transportation and because I was scarred, I think, a year and a half ago from having not having bus transportation for my child. And what was it like, two months? We didn't have enough drivers. So they got worked out? Right. And so while I'm very happy to see that they're not increasing the transportation budget here, which you kind of elaborated on, I am a vote. Where are we? Are they fully staffed right now?
So staffing is fluid, just like it is in our operations. I can't say in this moment that they're fully staffed, but they are certainly much closer to being fully staffed. Sometimes they'll be, they'll be fully staffed and then, you know, next month, they lose somebody and then they've got, they've got people in the pipeline. And it, it's more of a revolving door than you, than we would like to see still. But, you know, vast improvement has been made, vast improvements have been made. And that's
My point in being here is I'm willing to say, give us, you know, if you need an extra fifty K to take those thirty hour people to forty hour, because you're more likely to not have them leave because they're getting benefits. Maybe we should do that so that in August, when I, you know, or when we ask you for a report on that and they have to come and talk to us, we don't have to worry about enough, you know, school bus drivers.
So I'll get more, what I will do is I'll get a more in, I'll put together a report of the current vacancies, you know, current vacancies and all that, where they are with the fills and who's in the pipeline. It's been a while since I've done that. And I will also put together the narrative around, you know, how many drivers they estimate are driving forty hours but are really in the thirty hour, you know, bucket and 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 those types of things so that you all can see that. I, again, I, I do, they, you know, they're in collective bargaining, just like you all are. And so I don't know that, we have to be, I think we do have to be concerned about getting ahead of them and how they're managing that, because that is a challenge. That's all I would say there. But I agree, I'm all in favor of making sure we have enough drivers. And that's why I advanced their full request, because I understood every component of it. But that piece of the transition from purchase services over to payroll, I do think is there's got to be a way to work through that without an artificial one year inflation.
And we're going to get slammed next year for, again, really difficult attendance records, which we know are impacted by, we have a lot of English language learners, twenty percent of our population, basically, right? And they can't get a good school bus at the start of the year. We lose days and then we start getting dinged and, you know, and it's, our schools aren't going to be accredited, etc.
At this time, because I talked with, we're already talking about next year. At this time, there's no concern that we won't be able to start the year with the same routes we have this year, which are, which are no waitlist. So I do want to give you that, that reassurance in this moment. But I don't take anything for granted with transportation anymore. So anyway, but for what it's worth, they are, there seems to be no flinching that will start where we are now. And this year, we, we started without waitlist, I believe, so.
One last thing on K Tech. You guys were talking to Nelson County, I think, about bringing them in. Is that going to happen and help reduce this?
We've been talking with, we've been talking about talking to multiple localities. So I think if, I think, I don't think that they're the place where they want to, where they've been, want to express a commitment. But I know that we've, we're, we've taken on a little bit more of Flavana right now. And we've had some interest from other places. So, I mean, right now, K Tech's doing really well. And that number that you see up there is a decrease of a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the, what we showed you in December.
It's probably going to go down. Hopefully.
Hopefully. Hopefully. All right. Students, our student needs. And so the next couple of slides will lay out. So I think it's worth noting here, and I'll read from my notes here. So the changes to the standards of quality for our English language learners. So what we've done here is this slide has been, this table has been broken into what the new requirements are for levels. So level one, the one to twenty, level two, one to thirty, level three, one to forty, level four, one to fifty. And so you see the proficiency levels in the tables. So based on our calculation, so when we presented this, when we presented the slide to you all back in December, it showed five point five teachers from Jeannie Fouts, from Dr. Fouts, our specialists for our EL programs. So what we did was we went through and did some manual calculations to make sure that our numbers were calibrated. So based on our calibration, our division required, our division is required to have twenty eight point five seven EL teachers. I don't know where you find the point five seven. But that's how many we're required to have. Currently, we have twenty six budgeted full time positions. So to meet the new requirements, we would need to add two more FTEs. However, what we're doing is we are baking in, using Kim Powell's words, we're baking in one more position. We're adding in one more to accommodate the growth. And and sometimes I know that when you're doing these numbers, like you see that point five seven, you know, we're talking about people. So what does that five seven means if it's a couple of schools? And so this does give us a little bit of room here with this extra position that if we need to move a position between schools to better address what's happening with the master schedule, that extra, that position will, will do that. And so the estimated cost for the three FTEs is two hundred and eighty four thousand, six hundred and forty six dollars. And so as a reminder, you know, our, our L students, our students that require English language learner services, you know, make up about seventeen percent of our student population. And and so we know that the standards have changed. It's gone from eleven semesters to three. So we do feel like this is a good investment. And and Dr. Fouts, you know, while we are kind of overestimating the one position here, one thing she said during our meeting is that I know we've been talking about what the trends are, but there's a lot of uncertainty now in terms of whether we will see the growth. You know, so I think that the, the three additional three positions is it's the right ask based on our total numbers. And Dr. Fouts is totally on board with it. And I think it more than, it will more than serve our students in the manner in which we need it to. Yes.
Now we're at seven hundred and fifty or something? Or seven hundred and forty? So it's pretty minimal. I think my point being here, it's pretty minimal increase you're projecting.
This is the, this is the current.
Oh, this is the current?
No, no. Level one has an estimate of additional points.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a mix. We have a mix of an estimate plus a
Right.
Numbers.
We took that tape, we took the table.
We took the current number and we just add an estimate of twenty additional students.
Because that's what, if you recall the presentation she did in November, we use that, we use the table from November to do the, to do these calculations. So we went through, when we looked at how many level ones, she had level twos, and that's what we used to get this number. It's been a long time.
Can you speak to licensure of ELL teachers? And if this number were to decrease, how the, that staff might be reallocated within the buildings to provide services? Are they dual endorsed in ELL and?
You don't have to be anymore. I mean, when we were first, when we first went into education, it was an add on endorsement. Now it's some people's only and it's now some people's only endorsement. So hopefully, we don't have to do anything where we talk about having to repurpose staff and other positions. But if that were the case, then yes, we would have to look at people's licensure to determine if there's somewhere else that they could serve in the building. And I think one of the things that we'll continue to do is, especially with the climate and and how things are going, we will continue to monitor the numbers to see if we see any downward trends. Especially if there's some statistics, significantly significant changes.
I guess alternatively, the ratios are better, right? So if there's fewer students we're providing.
Colleagues, we're not expecting any new housing projects to development, large housing developments to come online.
Not for next fiscal year, correct?
Any other questions on this?
Yeah, real quick, sorry. Are the current budgeted, the twenty six, are those all filled?
There's a point five position at Johnson Elementary that's not filled. We've had applicants. All right. Just a reminder about the accountability implications. The accountability system does change next school year. And so we know that the needs of our students continue to change. And so we are looking at how we allocate our human resources and our instructional resources. And some of that will be reflected in what I will share with you as we talk about positions and programs to support our students' needs. And so we'll continue to make sure that our schools are adequately funded, I mean, adequately staffed to address the accountability. And so I will talk about that on the next slide in terms of student needs. So the three positions, the three positions are there that we just spoke about with regards to the ESL programs. And you see the cost there. We've been having some conversation and you see ESL here and we, we're going through a couple iterations of what we're calling this position. Ms. Johnson, Bianca Johnson does our family engagement and restorative work. And we have been going back and forth about what her work looks like and and what the gap is. And so we do recognize that there's this need for the continued family engagement, the boots on the ground work. And right now, it's earmarked as ESL on this sheet, but I will tell you that the position will still be there. We're still flushing it out, whether it's solely focusing on our multi language, multi language families or whether the position just should be someone who's engaging in our community. So it'll be one of the two iterations as we continue to work through this. As we talk about addressing the, the needs of our students, we are going to add a, the request is to add a, an additional reading and math specialist. It does not have a school listed to it. We are working through what we are referring to as our differentiated staffing model where the position, we will deploy these positions to the schools that have the highest need. And when these positions are filled, the people filling these positions know that yours, you will, you will have a job always, but your school may change year to year. I think a lot of times what we find is that people get really wedded to like, I applied to this to work at this school and only this school, and we know because all of our schools are great. But we want people to come on board knowing that your position will move as the student needs move, as the students As the students' needs change, and so that's what you see reflected here. Dr. Coffey and Dr. Odie and Dr. Health, I think, talked to you all about our health and medical sciences position. When we did the program of studies, this is the point five position here. And then, in future budgets, they will talk about how do we make that position whole. The recruitment specialist position is, is listed here. And this is really about keeping, we really need someone to just continue this, to focus on getting the talent. And this is not just our teaching positions, this, when we have custodial positions and when we have IA positions. You know, our HR staff works hard, but many days when they walk in the door. Whatever it is they thought they were gonna do on that day, they're not doing that because something's come up and they have to go address this need at a school. So, this position is really focused on keeping the website up to date. You know, making sure that they're scheduling our recruitment fairs, making sure that we have the right people attending those things. The engagement, and, and so we are really excited to figure out how to, you know. How to incorporate this into our human resources department. Our transportation coordinator, I will tell you that Ms. Duval has been like a lifesaver. I sent a message over to the city and said, you know, I know we, for a long time, we're trying to figure out what's this gonna look like? Why are you all requesting this back? But Ms. Duval, I mean, she's in the schools, she's meeting with the principals, she's going out to the buses. All the things that were getting in the way of our principals, because they were stopping to, to do. Or Ms. Powell, who's not the transportation, doesn't have the kid background, she was doing some of those things. So, this gives someone who brings the experience, can serve as a representative of the central office. But also can relate to the work of what principals are doing with students on the buses. Here, we have, you don't see the FTEs, but what we have here are the clinical social workers. If you all remember, we used some one-time monies a long time ago to create positions. And this is us putting the money into the budget so that we can start bringing on those positions. It still leaves some positions out there that are still on one-time funds. And so, we will need to, in our future budgets, try to bring those positions on. Ms. Raznick is working with our mental wellness teams. And, and really, this is a slow rollover to ensure that as we continue to work with these staff. That we, that she really has done a very good job of building out what the roles and responsibilities are. What that support looks like, and so this is us starting to bring those positions over. We still have one more year left of the money which you all earmarked for these positions. And, and so here you see us, what you see reflected is us starting to transition those positions over. From the one-time monies that we have allocated, Mr. Meyer, your brow.
Your brow.
You have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, so the transportation coordinator, is that Ms. Duval or is that above and beyond? So, how, did we just like contract her, we used money, how did, how, she's with us now, right?
So, we are invoicing the city. For her payroll expense from the point she came over through the end of the year, and we also brought the software over in-house. Pat Cuomo's team already spent a lot of time dealing with the interfaces between Power School and Versatrans. And so it was a great opportunity for us to have Versatrans all behind our firewall. We were also able to go ahead and start implementing some of the additional features, and we're looking to do even more with that. Because we were constrained from doing that when it was under City IT. So, but for the runout of the software cost for this year, we're also invoicing back to the city for that. In fact, Ms. Hoover and I were just talking about that before this meeting.
Great, thank you.
One, glad to see Ms. Duval over on our side officially, I know, I think Dr. Gurley, that was a suggestion from Ms. Powell. If I remember Dr. Powell, or Dr. Gurley, I think you were a little hesitant to bring over. But anyways, glad to see that she, she's, and not because of, I think it was just questions about. It was good to stay over there at the city or, or not here. Anyways, clinical social workers, this is more psychological work? Or is this more connecting to social services or all the above, sorry?
No, it's about the mental well-being of students, they do a lot of that boots-on-the-ground work with our students. They are very much an integral part of the mental wellness teams in our schools. And so, Ms. Raznick has them deployed differently at various schools. And so, the current layout consists of, there are school psychologists in buildings. SMHP, school mental health professionals, social, emotional workers. Support counselors, so there are a lot of different variations of, but they have clearly defined roles under the leadership of Rachel Raznick. Which we appreciate.
And so this looks like two and a half, basically the equivalent FTEs that were.
Two.
Two? Okay, and they're gonna be on contracts then, they're contractors?
They, they currently are, are Charlottesville City Schools employees. We just have, we've designated some money, but it's not recurring funds.
Okay, that's why you're not issuing the FTEs there, okay, I just, not understand that. It sounds like you're reading a math specialist, again, well, I like the idea of them being able to move around. Maybe address higher need schools where we're seeing testing issues, etc. That sounds like it's kind of the idea to help, and then the addition new accreditation challenges we're probably facing, great. The family engagement liaison, is there gonna be a focus on attendance and assisting in? Will you, attendance and making sure there's an attendance or? And I asked just because of the accreditation, like.
Right, we have a, I believe, well, not I believe, I absolutely know that the current work that we've been doing with attendance is yielding results. Our attendance, the chronic absenteeism rate has dropped. I've thought, I may have attached it in the board brief. But the, the chronic absenteeism rates have decreased significantly. And that's because of the work that we, the attendance work that we've been doing. And so, when we looked at from this year, this time to last, last year, this time to this year. We've seen some, definitely some increases in the attendance. And a lot of that is work through our attendance folks, SEO folks, however they've been deployed at the schools. So, the family engagement is, is really about really connecting with our families, what do you need? It's some of that tier-three work when our students are not really meeting with success. And sometimes it's some things that they need, the supports that they need from home. And, and really, the family engagement liaison is the, is the conduit between school and home.
Is that an additional person or is just one person for the whole?
It's an additional person, so it would make the, the team of two now a team of three. Yeah, so that person would work directly with Bianca Johnson.
Since you brought up Bianca, I'm, what happened, what was the discussion around removing the restorative justice position? That we saw in December?
Well, Bianca's still gonna do the restorative, it's, she's going to relinquish some of the fam. She still wants to very much be in the fam, I don't know how to make her unicorn position like something different. Other than to, what we've talked about is her relinquishing some of the family engagement components. And it going under this, the umbrella of the liaison position. So, I don't need two coordinators, and, and so she's a coordinator, right? So, I don't need two coordinators, so this person can work alongside her, just not at the same rate. And take on some of those additional duties that she was doing. So, it gives her more time in the restorative justice world. But still, she very much so, there are facets of family engagement that she wants to do. And, you know, when people want to do the work, then, I mean, you can't, you can't say no. So, it's, it's kind of a win-win with her.
She gave a very compelling presentation at our last board meeting, and it seems like it's, the work is yielding results. And so, I guess I'm disappointed that there's not a position that we're not expanding upon.
But we were never.
Justice work.
We were never, we were, it was always family engage, it was always the family engagement part that we were. Her position is technically already budgeted, so.
I guess I thought at some point I had heard that we were like adding to, like another. Full-time restorative justice person because she couldn't, she was at capacity.
That position, so what the last, so at the last meeting when we had the restorative justice. My thought was that it was gonna confuse people if they saw the restorative justice. Because then it, it's like she's applying for this position and we know that that's her. So, my thought is, after talking with her, let her go forth and do the restorative justice piece. But she still gave her compelling argument that she wants to still live in the family engagement. So, I can give her less of the family engagement, her title will still be, her percentage will probably be more restorative justice. Than family engagement, but now the things that she's like, in order for me to have more time to do restorative justice. The restored, the family engagement liaison can do those things. So, the focus still is restorative justice, it's just in the budget, I need someone to do this, and she's gonna do restorative justice.
And does this person have a teaching license or could they be?
It can be anyone.
Anyone who has skills, are we looking for somebody who's bilingual, trilingual?
Some of those things will be preferred, like Bianca comes to us with no, I mean, she did, I think she did a little bit with the class program. But like she's not had any teaching experience, it's really someone who can, who has a heart for the work and who can get in and do it. And, and so, we're still working on that job description.
Are there questions on this slide?
I didn't do the last.
Sorry.
Oh, I just touched back because my family engagement was really huge for me. And so I would like to see that, that job description not have so many restraints. Because I would like to see that someone that's committed in, in the community doing the work, and not everybody has a degree. So, I just hope that when that job is posted, that that's not one of the requirements, so that it's open to the whole.
Let's see, I, I think a lot of these positions I, I see do meet those needs. And again, the upcoming challenges we're gonna be facing with the new sort of accreditation, etc., so I appreciate that. I see that there's a lot of meeting the observations that Cube sent us also, which I appreciate. Last year, I know, I think we've made changes, we had a lot of permanent substitute positions. We didn't get all of them we wanted, I know we've, I think, been, done a better job of attracting with our pay change. Is there still the need for a permanent, additional permanent subs, or, I mean?
Well, I think if you ask a principal, they're gonna say yes. But I, you know, I think, I definitely think that they would say, yes, oh yes, we could definitely, we would definitely like a permanent sub. But I will say that we did budget, we did budget those positions. So, those positions are reoccurring for this year, I think that they've met the needs of our schools. I just met, met with the high school, I think it was like two weeks ago maybe, last week. And I know that they are very appreciative of the board and the work that was done at the central office. To get the pay increase for subs at the high school. I think that many of them will testify that, that has had a positive impact on school climate. Their productivity in the schools, and so those are the types of things that, you know, we've been focused on then as we move forward.
Okay, so it's not common practice anymore to have school teachers having to spend their planning periods or lunches covering classes frequently?
Well, when I was at the high school. He said, he said comma right now.
An FTE, but you know, there are other ways we can solve this problem, which it sounds like we have, so thank you.
Yeah, and I do, I did not get to mention, so this was not on our first screen, on our first presentation back in December. But we did have, when we started this process back in, back during the fall. And, and I asked the Walker staff about, you know, what is it that you all need? In order for us to support you as we go through the reconfiguration process? One, because knowing that this school is closing and all of the uncertainty. You know, it, it invokes a lot of anxiety for some people because it's the unknown. One, the first unknown is, well, I have a job, then it's, where will I be working? Is it somewhere that I want to work? So, that was a lot of the conversation, and, and so back during the fall, they did ask. At that time, I think it was, could we give them five thousand dollars for a retention bonus? And so, we did have a request from the Walker CEA reps about a, a couple of different things. And included in that was a retention bonus. And, and so, as I had conversations with my central office colleagues about, about the response to this. One thing that was very clear is that I didn't feel that we would be setting any type of precedence. By responding to that C, CEA request by saying, yes, we would honor it. Because what's very different about this situation is that, you know, we have a whole school that's closing. And, and as positions come open, anyone from this school can go and apply anywhere. And make it really hard for Dr. Thompson to fill positions in the last year of this school, creating a lot of uncertainty for people. You know, there are a lot of attractive positions within our own school division. Where if someone wants to leave and go to the elementary school, they could apply and go do that next year. And create a situation for Dr. Thompson where she would need to get those positions filled. So, with her advocacy and with the CEA's advocacy. We did move forward with, I'm moving forward with the recommendation of saying for licensed staff. That they receive a two thousand dollar bonus to stay. And for our support staff, one thousand dollars, and it would be paid December the fifteenth. Of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry. And then the second payment would be in May fifteenth of twenty twenty-six. And that's to keep them here, because again, good people can work anywhere and they're all great people. And we definitely want to see them stay with us. And so, it's been a heavy lift, I'm so appreciative of our teachers and, and working through with them. And they're gonna get some information tomorrow and next Wednesday, the first phase of the teachers will learn their placements, the classroom teachers.
Licensed staff would extend to our admin team as well?
I'm thinking our admin team too, because we. Yeah, I think we have to, I believe we have to honor everyone because it's a well-oiled machine here. I mean, it's, it's working in this building, and really. We don't, we want people to have a peace of mind that they know where they will be and come twenty twenty-six. And help this to just remain a well-oiled machine throughout next school year. Alright, okay, so summer of the budget. So, here's our bottom line listed right here. When you look at our revenue, our expenditures. We are looking at a budget change of five point four billion dollars. Five million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. And so, I think, to go back to what was said at the beginning, like, why do we have the next meeting? You know, it takes a lot of work to get to this moment, and I don't think, one of the things we haven't talked about is just that. We also have to internally look at our practices and how we spend money. And making sure that department bu, making sure that department budgets. That we're not just holding money over here and thinking we're gonna spend down. Like, we have to be very good stewards of, of the public's money. And I don't believe that all years will look like this. I believe that, you know, as the needs of our students change and we have this large number. We may get to this, we may arrive at this meeting, and I may be saying to you, the city's saying that they're not gonna give us what we need. And that's why that next meeting that Ms. Torres was referring to, I think that that's what that meeting is for. Now, if this next meeting evolves to something else because we feel like this is not it. Now, if this next meeting evolves to something else because we feel like this is not it, then absolutely. But I definitely think that this budget is a reflection of the voices of our Charlottesville City Schools community. That's it for me.
So. Go ahead. I'm gonna start on this side if we've got questions. Ms. Torres.
I do, I want to say thanks for this. So I'm just a comment, I guess, more than anything and a question. People, you know, make make the day, make all of this happen. And this is really people focused, right? Positions. I took a question to you, you know, I mean, we really haven't for a while that I can recollect talked about programmatic changes or investing in things. Not that people don't make a difference for the students, but we just haven't been in a place where we've had to add programs. I know that when you came in, we asked you to really look at what programs were here, make sure that we were doing what we needed to do. But do you feel like there's anything we should be looking at to improve the day to day experiences of our students?
I think right now, when we think about programs and we think about what happens in the instructional day, a lot has changed. And they're not, not all of those changes are changes that have been initiated by us. So when we think about what's happening now with our reading programs, with reading, that was a systematic change that occurred because of the Virginia Literacy Act. So that's one thing that has evolved our instructional practices. But it's had implications on our master schedule. So while it didn't spawn from our, from our budget, we do know that how we deploy our reading specialists, how we set up our master schedule, those things have continued to evolve. I think we've talked about our alternative learning program. I mean, those spaces continue to evolve. We've done new pathways, you know, we're getting ready to embark upon changes in the math standards. So that's going to change the way. So I think the district led, how we, how we deliver instructional programs is evolving because there have been changes in legislation. And and so, yes, I think I said all that to say, yes, I believe that we are meeting our students' needs. And I don't think that the last couple of years have been about more programs, because I think that the teachers, I think the teachers are doing a lot. And one more thing for them to learn at this moment, I think would be the the straw.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, I feel like so much is is good stuff, but also mandated stuff, right? So as far as that, yes, but it, you know, are there, is there enough money set aside for field trips and and different things like that? Are there other areas where we should be investing and supporting so that kids can be kids or those types of things? That's already built in, baked in?
Yep. All those things, all of those things are baked in and, you know, and rarely is the answer no. You know, rarely is that answer no. And I think that that's one thing that we've done a really good job. I mean, anything that comes, that hits our desk, we've always found a way. And and a part of the budget process this year was like, oh, there's not enough money because we've been going into academic services to get the money. So we've shifted this because we've noticed that there's been a lot of money at the end of the year in this area. So now it goes into this pot, so we don't have to keep moving money. So I think that was a very big part of our budget process this school year. So field trips will always happen. They're gonna go and do those things. So nothing doesn't happen here.
Are there any, in your opinion, areas that we we need to be a little bit more cautious about with this budget? Just because of the the current climate and and so many things that we don't know?
I don't think, I don't think so. I think the approach that we're taking is just it's business as usual. And so I don't think that that's made us cautious. I think that was one of the questions I got in an email today. You know, I'm, I don't have a lot of worries about what we are doing internally. Because we just, every student belongs, we're gonna keep teaching students the accurate history. You know, nothing changes. I mean, I don't have any worries at this point. And I typically try to use our team as the thermometer and and I think we're we're really good. We're really good in how we're supporting. But I'm open for suggestions if we're missing something.
Um, just to backtrack a little bit, I know we talked about like the license for the teachers that will be like transition to the school eventually. And then receiving, was it 2,000?
Licenses, licensed personnel will get $2,000. And then all other staff, the support staff will get $1,000. And we did that because that's typically how we tiered. You know, just because there's a little bit more work that goes into earning the credential in one area than the other. So we've typically done that, typically done things that way.
So could that be 2,000, 1500? Just like, um, just thinking about like how, you know, people would feel like knowing like, you know, if you're a teacher and you're a licensed teacher, you get 2,000. But I'm support staff and like this, like, you know, I would be like, you know, I may work just as hard. So why am I not compensated at least close? It doesn't maybe have to be 2,000, but it's a thousand dollar gap. So just kind of thinking about.
I guess it would be possible to put together what the budget implication would be to increase the support staff to 1,500. How many?
I would support.
How many people are we talking about?
This group can give us the number, but we meet next week. Is that next, next week? Oh, God.
And are all those support staff folks, have they all been placed in in other as well?
Yep.
Yeah.
We, we're just in limbo with less than a handful of positions. I mean, all the teachers, all the teachers will have somewhere to go. Just a few, few support staff positions and just got to make sure we have somewhere for our administrators to, our administrators.
No, I think, thank you, Ms. Cooper, for bringing that up. I did have that that feeling myself. And just recently had somebody who was, I guess, would be considered support staff that I remember from high school who just passed away from ALS. But that person, my memories of her, just the smiles and the interactions and how she made me feel. You know, so those people are really also, yeah, they are important.
Yep. So we'll bring that back to you at the next meet. They'll put that on our list.
Did you have any other comments? Okay.
Yeah, just thinking, worst case scenarios, federal money disappears. 6.8% of our budget, does our fund balance cover that amount?
Well, our initial, so our initial, so we know that the federal funds are off the table. But even when they were on the table, they weren't those funds that we were, the funds that we were getting. So many of those funds are already allocated and Ms. Hoover can explain this better than I can. But many of those funds are already allocated. And so that wasn't the initial worry. I know some of it is just like when the, we had the fear of like government shutdowns and things of that nature. It's those reimbursements, those timely reimbursements, but you have some different words for that.
What I would share with you is that our Title I, Title 6B are fairly funded programs that are formula driven. And they are, the awards that we're currently working on have our, the money has already passed through to the state. So they are already secure. And and even with the awards for the next year, the method and the way that they're calculated was not in line with the financial assistance money that they were targeting. So we feel like that we were okay, that we were safe. Now, to address your, if the world should fall out and and those federal money should dry up, then that's when we're going to be going to the city and saying, hey, we need an additional six, seven million dollars to pay for it.
So I mean, that's my, I mean, that federal allocation is right, around $7 million. And our surplus budget fund balance right now is how much?
Off the top of my head, I think it's about 6 million, five, 6 million.
Okay, so we kind of have in our bank account, just in case, worst case, worst, worst, worst case scenario. Okay, thank you. I, yeah, I think, Dr. Gurley, you answered some of these questions because I don't want to limit ourselves to this five, what I again, think is an artificial formulaic kind of number. And I appreciate that they're being generous with us and I again would quibble with that. But we used to have in our elementary schools, Spanish being taught. You know, and we used to have, you know, some other things here. I'm just, again, I know we've been this, I think this is what Lisa was getting to, actually, Ms. Torres was getting to, like a very low level, like, we just got a survive mentality for the last couple of years. And I think we, I'd like us to, beyond that, and like, what are the other Richmond activities, etc. Again, other than hopefully just beating the basic needs, right? We are a wealthy community here and our community should be investing in the students in these schools. So, you know, I just want to make sure you don't feel like you're limiting yourself here. I know you have to negotiate with Mr. Sanders, but it's also our job to negotiate with our city council colleagues for more money. So I'll leave that there. But I didn't hear from you any specific like gaps that you're like, oh, wow, we're we're missing. But at the same time, I know this is not the number you brought to us originally with all FTUs you want originally. Lastly, I didn't see anything here on the CIP. I know this is all operational, but we attended a meeting with the last week where they talked about our budget. And we've been talking about the priority project allocation. And it's been stuck at 1.25 million for five years. Is that going to go up? Because I didn't see that in their presentation last week. And even though we've been talking about it for three months, which drives me a little nuts.
I have not heard about an increase for that.
Right. So I mean, I would just hope that, you know, that and Ms. Dooley asked me to go get money for, you know, these other things. And so I'm also really happy with the schedule they presented last week about the solar rollout, etc. And so, you know, I would like to see us present the asks on the CIP to not just our operational budget also. I think it's something that we can work on again for that next one. But there are some gaps there, I think, and the city needs to come back to us and increase the amounts of that to make sure our facilities are operating like they should. And our students have a healthy and our staff have a healthy environment, comfortable environment, an environment where, you know, it's amenable to their teaching and learning. So that's in general there, but I do hope, and I think I want to see an accelerated kind of layout on so the solar rollout and other things can drop down and reduce our expenses in addition to increasing that priority project amount. Thanks.
Ms. Richardson, any comments?
I was just curious about diversity and inclusion. Are we concerned about any programs or funding in that area?
Well, we saw the executive order. Dr. Johnson is still, she's doing, still doing the good work for us of equity. Her department has evolved over time. And so we've been, we've always called, well, this mostly last school year, this school year, we've been saying that she's the Office of Strategic Initiatives, because that's where a lot of the program initiatives have have been. But I mean, she's still doing the equity work, still going and and being the face of that for us. And so I think that's another one where we're still saying it's business as usual.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, ask about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Meyer, thank you for your comments. I think, you know, it gives us some feedback as we work together to think about what our presentation looks like. I don't have any further comments. So at this time, we will open it up to public comment. I'll ask, there's anybody here to raise your hand in the Zoom room? Are we on Zoom? Okay, raise your hand on Zoom room. Anybody in the audience that would like to give public comment? No takers? Nobody. Everyone's passing. Anybody in Zoom? Okay. All right, we've got some, just a few meetings coming up.
CEA doesn't have a public comment, which can we interpret that as? This is.
That's, yeah, not the time to interact. They will engage with us as they, as they choose. And so some meetings that are coming up Thursday, next Thursday, February 6th. We have our normally scheduled Charlottesville City School Board meeting at 5:00 and we get to recognize some teachers beforehand, which will be exciting. Monday, February 10th, we have a joint budget work session back here with our city council colleagues. Thursday, February 13th, we have our school budget work session. And then there are also some additional meetings that have gone out today through Parents Square related to our rezoning efforts as well. If you guys will indulge me, I wanted to read just something. "Thanking the community for reaching out and sharing concerns regarding the recent executive orders and their potential impacts on our students and staff. As a school division, we remain committed to fostering a learning environment where every student, regardless of their background or identity, orientation, feels valued, safe and supported. We recognize that policy changes have created uncertainty and concern. And we want to assure you that our focus remains on the well-being of all of our students and staff. Our school division has long upheld values of diversity, inclusion and respect, and we will continue to do so. We appreciate just how uncertain this time is. Our curriculum has not changed. It is not going to change. And we look forward to continuing to uphold our mission of being better together. So with that, I will call this meeting concluded."